So we can open the meeting to um to the attendance.
Wow.
Hi and good evening. Today is um April eighteenth, um welcome everybody for the zoning Board of Appeals, Town of North Reading. Uh my name is Barb Rehnam, the uh. Excuse me, um. Chairman of the uh of the board uh with us tonight, our um full board, we have um Brendan Riley.
Oh boy, there's fourteen participants.
Maria Lockhart and Michelle Bodian. And um we're the two matters on the uh agenda for tonight. Uh as it turns out, uh the two matters that were um continued from our last meeting. Uh that and before we move on to that, um there was a matter that was submitted. Uh and put on hearing uh but has to be continued over for purposes of um formal notice and publication. Uh that being thirty-one Redman Ave, uh which is asking for a variance for in addition to a um to a construction. The applicant uh Chris Christopher Chido has asked for a continuance to our um May meeting date. Um and just for the purposes of the record, um I'm inclined to um grant or grant the request for the continuance until the May date. And just I want to put it on record uh and get a vote from uh the board uh for that purpose. Um excuse me while I check for our May date. So if we keep with our current calendar, uh the ideal that would bring us to um Thursday, May sixteenth, uh so before we get into the uh the calendaring, um I'd just like to ask the board, Brendan, Maria, Michelle, if about any anybody's availability or lack of, you know, unavailability, excuse me for um to meet again on May sixteenth.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Sorry, isn't the second Thursday, though, the ninth?
Yeah, but it's a sure, it's an early month, so um with us meeting today on the eighteenth, um you know, the I think the dropping it into the the lack of a better way of thinking it, that the teens for calendaring um might be best.
All right, I can uh I can make that work, but would prefer to stick with the second Thursday, because that's what I blocked off.
But I'm again, I'm good with either the ninth or um or the seven or the sixteenth.
I am. Do the night as well, if.
You're okay, and Brendan?
May ninth. I'm okay with that. I had it uh.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the initial, just at the outset for this um regarding uh the petition, uh the request for variance for in addition to thirty-one Med Red Redman Ave, North Reading, and submitted by the uh applicant Christopher Chido, uh um does anybody want to bring a motion to continue that for continued hearing and put on for um again now um May ninth? Uh twenty twenty-four.
I'm Maria Lockhart, motion the board to continue the variance for an addition at thirty-one Redman Avenue to our next hearing Thursday, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Um petitioned by Chris Cheeto.
Uh can I get a second?
I Brendan Riley, second.
Thank you, Brendan. Uh all in favor of the uh the continuance, continue uh to to continue that matter for hearing again to uh May ninth?
I'm Maria Lockhart.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I. Thank you, everybody. So Kathy, can you uh make sure that thirty-one Redman Ave gets put on our calendar for again um May ninth?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh moving to our act to tonight's agenda, um the first matter before the uh on our on our hearing list, uh two Fieldcrest Terrace, uh that's an appeal of the um of the of the finding by the uh building commissioner. So just to re revisit this matter um into that point, um is Mr. Mastoni here uh with us tonight?
Yes, I saw him there.
Is he um is he? I muted for purposes of the hearing.
All right, there we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. So to um just quickly, we we revisit this um uh two Fieldcrest Terrace on uh January eleventh, um our building commissioner Jerry Noel uh submitted a finding and um for the ease of the the hearing. Uh the uh the commission, uh the Mr. Noel acknowledged that the lot was originally known as one Fieldcrest Terrace. Um filed for variance to separate the lot with the approval made by the lots for making it then one and two Fieldcrest Terrace, the zoning board clearly states that its finding dated February ninth, that one lot contains a single family in a barn, lot two contains one single family. Uh his finding and documentation of finding that uh it was uh a single lot and that uh lot two Fieldcrest uh was not to be designated as having a um a dwelling and that it was effectively uh an abandoned property or again not a nonconforming property and uh again, Mr. Um Stone uh has appealed that finding. So with that being said, one of the reasons we put this over was to determine uh what was uh what was the um proper characterization of that property. And to that point, uh unfortunately, um for tonight's meeting, um Mr. Noel isn't available, Commissioner Noel. And again, a single-family dwelling and accessory structure. A lot of conversation was had at the last meeting regarding the the characterization of that structure. Um everything from being nonconforming to to uh as under the bylaws as well as abandoned. Now, the issue that really that the petitioner um or the um party, Mr. Stone, brought before the board was that it was grandfathered in, and then it became a question of um how was it was it properly characterized? Upon further consideration of the zoning bylaws, and I'm uh I'm just at the outset of tonight's meeting, um is there any further other than the petition, uh other than the position taken by the applicant, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um you're relying upon the idea that it seemingly was grandfathered in and that even with it being brought, even in given that it it was char- the characterization of it as something other than a barn or a shed was improper and that it was actually to be considered a dwelling and unless I'm just trying to summarize the the um the discussion and conversation and hearing from our our last meeting, um that being again, March twenty-eighth. Uh Mr. Mistone, is there uh anything to just more further clarify your position? That going back to the appeals decision, I think you brought.
Yeah.
Go ahead, please, thank you.
Well, tonight, I I I thought we were just gonna have like a continuance tonight, um going by what you said the last meeting. And uh because you wanted to talk to the uh town councilor and um I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to him, and so all I wanted to say tonight is whatever his decision was, whether it was for me or against me, that I'd be privy to uh, you know, whatever state law or, you know, whatever his findings were, I'd like to be able to uh have access to that information, and then I thought I was going to be ready for the May meeting. So um the only thing that I would add to tonight is I just my original argument that uh uh going by the the bylaws about having the uh um that that building was built before the bylaws came into effect in seventy-seven. And uh and doesn't fall under, I'm just reading the, you know, what the bylaws say, and uh, you know, it doesn't come under the under the same ruling as a house built after seventy-seven.
Okay, so Kathy, um we weren't able to get this resolved by town council, but it also, the question has been brought by and it was mentioned at the towards the end of the the meeting, whether or not it it should, is it appropriate to go to town council, because again, um they're just not, it's not um, they're not a, our use of town council uh comes at a cost, uh maybe you or I would, maybe you can clarify that for purposes of um this this matter?
Myself?
No, I'm I'm addressing this to Kathy Morgan, our um our.
To get it, whenever the town gets advice from town council, um there's a cost, there's a charge to the town, so um before we can get in touch with town council, uh the town administrator has to approve that cost. I don't know if he's, I believe he was on vacation some of this week, um I I didn't know whether it was you, Bob, that was going to get in touch with him or.
Yeah, I didn't have any success in that effort, um so um again, and that's that that's the practicality of this, so.
If I could just jump in there quickly, I mean, just from the last meeting, um I I'm going by what you said in the last meeting, and I thought tonight was just gonna kind of be a formality, uh just to kind of update on things, and you didn't think that you would be getting an answer quick enough from uh from the town council uh by the time this meeting has, so you you had guessed, and I think you were correct, that it would probably fall into the May meeting.
Okay, and thank you. Um and I know Brenda and Michelle joined in the um in the conversation and the discussion from um from our March meeting, so uh and I think Mr. Mastoni's characterization characterization is right, um so given that.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
My name is Amy Sonia, I live at twenty-four Fieldcrest Terrace, and I was doing some research um after the last meeting, and I believe you have a zoning law that um makes this pretty easy shut case. Um it's your zoning two hundred dash twelve abandonment be nonconforming uses or structures which have not been used for a period of two years or more or which have been abandoned shall thereafter be subject to all provisions of this zoning law. So that if that was ever, which again, as I spoke last time, forty-eight years at this property, knowing Mr. Mustown my almost my entire life since I was three years old. Um that building was never occupied then, so it if his son or, you know, is saying that it was at one time, it's been abandoned. So right there, doesn't that make this a opening, a yeah, a shut, you know, a closed case?
Uh can I jump in here quickly?
Yeah, just very quickly, because I know that is these these.
This is what the building inspector said before, right? So I don't want to sit here and have to go through two hours of people coming up with something when they haven't really done their research, and this is what we're debating. So I wasn't prepared to do all this tonight. And I I gotta leave, I'm leaving tomorrow morning, early in the morning to go out of the country, and then um I'll be back for the May meeting. That's what I was being prepared for. Again, I thought tonight was just a formality, but I I I don't want to sit on here for two hours again, where and people quoting uh bylaws when they're they're not listening to what uh, you know, what's being presented.
Okay.
Well, thanks to differ, I am listening, and I have done my research.
Okay, uh ma'am, I'll do and um point being this, and I'm gonna, um I'm not trying to assert anybody's position rights or challenges or whatever that you might be looking to assert regarding Fieldcrest. This was put over for almost effectively a status, and unless Michelle or Brendan has a different understanding of that as the sitting board members during the meeting uh in March. Um we haven't had any success in accessing this, we don't have a position taken either by the town administrator as to whether or not it's appropriate to go to town council um at this time, and I respectfully to everybody who has assembled or joined us for the meeting tonight, that is that is my memory of how we left the matter, and unless Michelle and or uh Brendan has a different recollection, I'd appreciate that at this time.
It, yeah, just to jump in, that that's that's my memory as well. So this was just a status update to say, hey, we're still working on getting the legal opinion to do the interpretation of the zoning regs that we need. Haven't been able to get that interpretation yet, so this was just just a quick check in, appreciate everybody joining, uh but nothing substantive is being discussed today. This is just to keep it as an open hearing that'll then carry over to the next meeting, which might have to carry over to the following meetings, all depending on the timing when we can get authorization to spend the funds to then get the opinion from town council. But appreciate everyone joining tonight.
That's correct, my understanding.
And thanks, and just for everybody who's joined for Fieldcrest tonight, um due to, so the purpose of the board is obviously to to meet, we obviously meet on a monthly basis. And for a number of matters that resulted from uh uh calendaring challenges and any number of things, um we have been attempting over the for the better part of our last two to three meetings, which include both the March, but previous to that, February and January, the ability of the of the of the board in to um to set a more um stable calendar, I'm not trying to short shrift or excuse anything that's going on here, but with the calendaring of tonight's last, our last meeting to tonight, and now that we've set the date for our our May meeting, that being again, May nine, um we had no real expectation that this matter was going to be um that there was, there's always the chance that it could go to go to the administrator, town administrator, and then find its way to town council, but it is a, it is it is a little bit out of the normal process that the zoning Board of Appeals um has to effort in order to resolve something, and just to be clear uh to, I think it was Amy that was noting, as well as the other people that have are interested in this, effectively, if the the issue that the position, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mastoni and my fellow board members, the question really comes down to, there's several things, but at the outset, does the property fall either, is it is it under the bylaws or isn't it? And if it is under the bylaws, then the position that has been brought up tonight, as well as at our last meeting, um can it be considered abandoned? If it isn't even abandoned, is it nonconforming? And if it isn't nonconforming, then does it fit within the bylaws for purposes of development? All those matters kind of in in many ways, correct me if I'm wrong, have to be decided, determined to decide it whether or not it it has been grandfathered in, and if it had been grandfathered in, even allowing for that, was it still um nonconforming for purposes of development, even at the time it had been grandfathered in? What was its characterization? Was it, and even if it had been grandfathered in, was it practically abandoned, not even even if it isn't to be considered under the bylaws? And I think that's the position that the building inspector took, so this is the legality, the nuances of this, that I think we have to get a clarification of. Whether it falls from uh town council, I mean, through the office of the administrator and then to a town council, or just on our own um consideration and application, so um with that in mind and to try to move this along, um I would take the position that for tonight's purposes, that it was to be considered for status only, and having no change in the status of of the examination of it by town administrator and or and inherently from their uh town council, if that is to be considered appropriate, that maybe the better uh that the best uh determination of how to proceed tonight is to, again, to put it over once again for status and continuance until our May ninth meeting. Um I'd welcome input from the board members on that.
Sounds good to me, ready to make a motion.
And uh what Brendan, since you were were party to the um to our last meeting and heard very, very much the um the matter before the board tonight.
I I agree, I would second that.
Okay, um and before, uh and I know a motion will very appropriately be brought in a moment. I do want to make one thing very clear to all the parties to this. Um I'm not exact, while and um I think um of the people that are involved tonight, Maria might be the better person that could understand my opposition, because I'm not a big fan of continuing matters um without some sense of resolution, so to that point, uh as you know, this isn't a, this isn't, we're not running a docket here, uh as might be the case in in um in a in a court uh situation. I do want to be clear to the petitioner and to the interested parties uh on regarding Fieldcrest that um if the town administrator decides that it doesn't have or isn't appropriate to go to town council, and that he would rely upon the determination by our board for characterization of whether or not this matter, while it lay may lay outside of the bylaws, which we have control over. It does bring about an interesting question, what to do with this odd property or one that might be like that. Um and for that purpose, I am going to very much welcome and um rely upon um the, for me personally, as a as a voting member, I am uh prepared to rely upon the the information and um observations of the of the neighbors and the abutters for the the use and and the history of this property. Because if it is going to be grandfathered in at some point, um it does have to fall within the bylaws for practical purposes, if not the bylaws themselves, then just how this property is most appropriately you're going to be used and characterized. And so um take that as just my own, not even as chairperson for the for the board, but uh just as an acting member of the board for determination going forward, so um that being said, um if any uh if anybody, uh if one of the board members would like to make a motion to uh continue the matter to May ninth for status, um please, I um uh feel free to do so.
Uh I'm Michelle Modi and make a motion to continue the matter to Fieldcrest Terrace uh over for a status hearing at the May ninth meeting.
Can I get a second?
Uh Brendan Riley, second.
Uh all in favor of the motion to continue the matter for status only to uh May ninth?
Michelle Modi and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I. Um Kathy, um if you would put it on the calendar, our calendar for May ninth for status only, and uh to that point, um I I'm not trying to inconvenience anybody, not just the uh petition of Mr. Mistoni, but also the assembly here. What I think is going to occur on May ninth, let me be clear, we will get a clarification whether or not this is going to go to town council, and if it is not, then um practically speaking, it'll go onto our June calendar for continued hearing, so again, for um any anybody, including uh Miss Stone, Mr. Mistone, the petitioner, um as well as um uh anybody interested in the outcome of Fieldcrest. My and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will have, we should very likely have a clarification of what the position of town council, if there's going to be one, will be at that time, so given that this is only going to be put over for status for May nine, um I have every expectation that this will not be continued past our June mat uh hearing uh uh itinerary and uh um uh agenda, so um anybody who is interested in further hearing, um I would very much urge or you're more than welcome to join us on May nine, but um it may, it, our hopes and my very sincere expectation is, is that at that time, we'll have a very clear idea of whether or not this is going to be heard. Um again, uh for you, for he go to continuation for hearing and hopeful uh very likely resolution uh in our June uh hearing, uh excuse me, on our June agenda uh for hearings. And um so I don't, so if you're not able to join us um for May ninth, uh you'll very likely be able to check in with town uh for um finding out what 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 its status will be, whether it's going to have to be continued again for status into June or for continued hearing and resolution uh ideally uh for uh in our June, June hearing date. So again, Kathy, um if you can put this over for status only uh for June, for May ninth, uh that would be appreciated, thank you. And Mr. Mistone, as the petitioner, you did note that you were going out of the country, but you do expect to be available for May nine?
I do.
Okay. And again, if we get any information regarding uh the position of town, the administrator or indoor town council, uh we'll do our best to alert everybody to that, but again, uh this is not being put over to May ninth for continued hearing, it is being put over to that for status, and at that time, we'll have a very idea, clear idea of whether or not it's going to return to the hearing uh status uh to hearing again, excuse me, um for me, uh for our June meeting, whenever that's determined to be. So again, thank you, everybody, regarding to Fieldcrest uh Terrace. Please have a good evening and thank you for your continued interest in this. Moving on to our our other agenda item for tonight. Uh this is regarding petition for variance for the uh attached garage for twenty-two Wright Street. Uh the applicant is Sean O'Halloran, is Mr. O'Halloran with us tonight?
Sorry to interrupt before he acknowledges he's here, just the question came in in the comments, uh confirm uh request to confirm there'll be no decision made in May, just want to reiterate what you said, May will just be status, any decisions will be determined at the June meeting.
Yes, thank you, yes, uh thank you for bringing that to my attention, Michelle, for purposes of the board, no, no, thank you. Um uh is um Mr. O'Halloran and anybody interested with regard to twenty-two Wright Street available uh tonight for that continued matter?
Yes, I Sean O'Halloran in attendance.
Good evening, Mr. Halloran, so um once again, this was a continued virtual hearing um regarding the. regarding the petition of Sean O'Halloran, twenty-two Wright Street, North Reading, Mass. Map sixty-two parcel thirty-three. Seeking a variance from the side yard setback to build an attached two-car garage with a second floor master suite addition per the setback requirements, the dimensional density regulations, North Reading bylaws, zoning bylaws. So once again, welcome to Mr. O'Halloran and any, all the interested parties regarding twenty-two Wright Street. Why don't you bring us up to, up to tonight with regard to, to twenty-two Wright Street, Mr. O'Halloran? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So after the last meeting, I went back to my architect and my surveyor. Was able to shrink the plans. So now we're going to be two and a half feet off the property line. We shrunk the addition twenty-eight by twenty-eight. We felt the need to continue to have that, that breezeway with our family growing. Need more space for, you know, items in the kitchen and, and being able to, you know, store jackets and hats and shoes and everything like that in that little den area. So we felt that this was, you know, we sacrificed a little bit of space to be off the property line a little bit more. Given we were only six inches off the property line the last time we had talked. So we went with the same exact design we had. We just shrunk it down a little bit to where you guys wanted to see a little further off the property line. So we're hoping that this will be what we need to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Halloran. And before I open up to hearing, I do know that it was consideration that had to be brought to the attention of your immediate neighbor, who is owner of twenty Wright Street, which is in the direction of the, the, of the project being expanded. By any chances, I know that in the past he has submitted, is Mr. Mr. Snyder and or is anybody representing Mr. Snyder with us tonight? To that point. Kathy, is this, there was a, an included letter dated March eighth of twenty twenty-four, is that? That's different from the prior submission from Mr. Snyder, is that correct?
Thought it was the same letter.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that was the same letter. He's, he's aware that we shrunk everything. He wasn't available tonight to attend the meeting, but he's still on board with everything the last time we spoke.
I assume if he was okay with six inches, he'd be okay with two and a half feet?
Yeah, I guess so.
I think it's a fair assumption. And again, my, in a, for the community planning commission purposes, the notation dated March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. CPC did ask the question, is the addition over the leach field? And should be vetted, if it is, this should be vetted by the Board of Health. At that time, I think it goes nearly to the property line and is there a hardship? Those were all the, the issues brought to the, to our attention on behalf of the planning commission. So.
So it's not over the leaching field. And it is ten feet off of where our tank is going to be. It's going to be uptight against the fire pit. Ten feet from that back line of twenty-eight feet. My architect also went in and the room that we have is, as an office space, he has that marked on the new plans. So it is going to stay as a three-bedroom with the, with the proposed addition. And the addition was approved with the conservation. I had to go to a conservation meeting. It was either last month of the prior month for the septic to be approved. And these proposed addition setbacks were in there, the, the six feet off the old existing dwelling. So that's all part of the septic plans right now. So they did approve that at the meeting and I already have that signed off with the registry of deeds.
Thoughts from the board? In particular, Brendan and Michelle, because you were part of the hearing in, in March.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you hearing our direction, taking it and going back. I am a lot more comfortable approving two and a half feet setback. I was thinking even more so about not wanting you'd have to trespass on your neighbor's property to do the work or maintain anything. Six inches is not enough. So I, I feel better and I appreciate, as you had said, the hardship is financial. There's nowhere else to put this and impractical to go further up. So I, pending other board members' opinions and discussion, I'd be ready to vote.
I've mentioned that you kept it a three-bedroom, so that is noted on the plans as an office. I think Bob, Jerry had mentioned something that there can't be a door on that, or am I mistaken?
There's no door on that room. We just, he had it marked as a bedroom because that's what it was before. But we had taken the closet out and, and the door when we knew we wanted to go for, you know, adding another bedroom, knowing we couldn't have a four-bedroom house with the, the plot that we have. We weren't able to do a four-bedroom septic. So we, we don't have a door or a closet in that room. So I just had him, him mark that and he, he did show it with no closet or door on that room for the office.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for the clarification for the record, I don't know if this is even possible, Kathy, but is there a way to overlay the two, to show really how the effort being given here by Mr. O'Halloran and his team in order to bring this in the two feet? Or is it just, am I over?
I can try to, hold on just a minute.
I believe he did put like the new numbers on the new plan of where, wherever he shrunk it.
Right. So I think that, I think that, and again, I, we, I appreciate and I, I guess, and I clearly from the board tonight, the, the the consideration given to trying to bring this in. I mean, six inches was just a line that was never going, no pun intended, a line that was never going to be crossed or approached. And again, Maria, you've got the freshest eyes of anybody. So, you know, we're still, we're still looking for a variance of, of, you know, not a great deal of space between twenty, twenty-two and again, the, the neighbor twenty Wright Street. And I know that the, the conversation that we had at the last public hearing before we went into, in the, in, in terms of directing the effort here to revise the plan was, you know, what, what is good for O'Halloran? And in this case, twenty-two Wright Street, and quite frankly, Wright Street itself. I think that was a fair position being brought by Mr. O'Halloran that, that this, the renovations to twenty-two Wright Street will improve Wright Street itself. So we always are looking for purposes of hardship. I know that you expressed the idea of financial concerns. And that shouldn't be taken lightly by anybody because there have been other matters before this board in the past where somebody is, I can distinctly remember somebody saying, I don't really want to come back to have to revisit the project again. You know, what was once, you know, I don't know, if you go back to when this board was, was created, when the zoning boards bylaws were passed. Hardship at that time, financial, does not, I, I doubt very much that it, it meets the standard of hard, financial hardship that exists in the world today. And if I, you know, I follow very closely the changes, not only for purposes of of inflation, but also what the Fed is doing with, with rates in order to try to stem and or promote the flow of, of, of economy. So I do appreciate very much, but even, excuse me, even given that, six inches was just too little for all purposes. And I, I know that I might have been efforting the position and advocating for, for the concerns of Mr. Snyder, even though he had kind of signed off on the deal. It, it does have, we have to take a much more macro rather than micro view of all of these projects. So again, I do appreciate this, but I think just to bring Maria in on this. You know, the fresh eyes now seeing this as effectively, you know, two and a half feet of space from the property line. I'd welcome your thoughts on that, since this is your first review of this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of torn because I see all of the effort that's gone into this, but I don't know if we've ever approved of a setback that's only two and a half feet, have we?
Well, this board itself, I don't think so. And, you know, I know. But this is, you know, this is, this is where it gets interesting because I know that future petitioners to the, to the board will say, well, look what you did on Wright Street as opposed to what you might have done on this other street or denied it here and allowed it there. What is interesting about this, this project is, is that the neighbor twenty Wright Street can't do anything with that space between that home and this home because of the position of placement of, of their septic system. Is that correct, Mr. O'Halloran? I think that's kind of.
That's correct. Yeah, he's, so he has, he owns two lots. The house is built on, it's in the middle of the two lots. So the lot closest to our property is unbuildable due to his septic and leaching field, which is, you know, the proper distance off the property lines as it lies due to regulations and stuff like that. I know you weren't at the last meeting, but there is still going to be about fifty feet between foundations if this approves. And now going the two more feet over, we're just getting further away from his property lines, which I know we don't, you guys had talked about, we didn't. You're more so on the property line versus where the foundations lie, but you know, we shrunk it, shrunk it a little bit to be off the property line and, and be able to get, you know, get through there between our property and the house without going on to his property to get in the backyard or do whatever we have to do. So we have that, that little bit of play right there. But yeah, I mean, we're trying to, you know, keep it as, as we had it and, you know, we shrunk it, what you guys wanted before. But where his is an unbuildable lot, you know, hopefully that helps in our favor.
So Maria, as is, as is the case with me, as being a more of a longstanding board member. So, you know, the question that obviously has to be asked in all of these variance requests and grant versus denial is, it always starts with hardship. And, you know, that, as I just referenced a couple of minutes ago, like, you know, this idea of hardship, I mean, it is, it is a short distance. And it, it, but it's, it's, not that it's maybe unique, but it does have that, as Mr. O'Halloran just characterized, this unbuildable space between the two foundations. So given that, as a, you know, a consideration, I'm, you know, I'm, when, when we, when we go to conversation within the board in maybe a matter of moments, before we close it, close this public hearing, you know, is there any, any thought to the idea of this just being, you know, a unicorn of sorts? Or is this, you know, something that the board still is, is concerned with in terms of creating, for lack of a better idea, precedent in that we're shortening these, these distances? I mean, it is a unique situation and I do, you know, I do take stock in the idea that Mr. O'Halloran has put forward, which is that in the, in our March meeting, which you weren't available for. You know, this is, I guess, you, your family has always owned twenty-two Wright. And, you know, this, this property redevelopment is, is being done in phase, which is an interesting situation that Brendan has pointed out that it kind of does create, you know, an interesting idea here that, you know, you're doing, you know, it's, it's regrettable that that the board, that, that, that shouldn't probably, you, you, we take for granted that how these properties are being reconstructed in an odd sort of way. I'm not looking to, I'm not trying to make an example of anybody here, but it's an interesting question that I hope Mr. O'Halloran understands is that, you know, we have to look at this as just, not just as Wright Street, but in an odd sort of way. You know, the, the concerns of Mr. O'Halloran for twenty-two Wright Street. So I'm interested in just getting thoughts on that, not, maybe, maybe it's not appropriate for, you know, come of this matter, but going forward for us as a, as a board, not only for us, but boards in the future. And in consideration of things in the past, as Maria just said, I don't, I can't recall ever, you know, the, I can't recall ever giving a variance of this, this shorter distance, but at the same time, is this just a, is this just these situations, is this just again, just a unique unicorn because of that unbuildable lot between twenty-two and twenty, the foundational structures of twenty-two and twenty Wright Street for the, the purposes of the hall? Because nobody ever really looks at their property. At, you know, they just assume that space is always going to be there, like, you know. And until the town gets rid of septic, I guess that's going to be the case.
Yeah, I think it's a relevant data point, but I think each request is different and needs to be evaluated on its merits. You know, each individual hardship, each individual lot, how they can build, where their septic is, you know, lot lines, all of those things. So I think it's relevant to know if this has been approved. But I also think we've got a lot of changeover on the board and over the years, what, what was done doesn't necessarily mean what the current board needs to do. And I don't think with Changer, we always have the longest of memory anyway. So like I said, I'm comfortable with this, given the rejiggering that's gone on.
Brendan?
I would, I would tend to agree, just given that, that no, adjacent lot is unbendable, unbuildable with the way that it is currently set up. He's what now over fifty some odd feet off the
Foundation.
Neighbor's foundation line. And he did come back to us. Yeah, put forth an effort to try to squeeze a few more inches or feet out of it and he did that. It is a unique situation. So I'm with Michelle. I'd be comfortable moving ahead with a decision based off of that.
Thank you, Brendan. And Maria, I know I keep kind of shadowing you in on this because you weren't here for the body of this, but before we go to just the consideration of the board, is there anything else you might like to bring to the, to the attention of the board, especially, well, Mr. O'Halloran? To the attention of the board, especially while Mr. O'Halloran has the opportunity to reply as it is still in public hearing.
Okay, yeah, just to, just to clarify, so the neighbor has no problem with this, right?
Yes.
Correct, yeah, he wrote a letter for us, uh, he wasn't available to be in the meeting tonight. Um, you know, like I said before, if, if the, his, if his property was any closer or it was a buildable property, I wouldn't even. Have thoughts of doing something like this, uh, whereas the neighbor on the other side. Uh, twenty-four, they've done, you know, multiple additions over years and not since I've been here. Or my parents have owned the house, but you know, their addition is, is within like. Five or six feet of my property, and it's only about sixteen feet. To twenty feet in between foundations. So if it was, you know, on the opposite side of twenty Wright Street, if we were going to be. Tight like that, there's no chance I would ever go for a variance, just because, you know, I don't, I don't like being on top of other people's houses. And, you know, doing this, we're still going to be over fifty feet. From the houses, I understand will be, you know, pretty tight to the property, but. Like everyone said, I, you know, I took everyone's thoughts in consideration last meeting. I went back, you know, obviously it's costing me money to go back to my architect and the surveyor to, to shrink everything. Um, so they did the best they could with the needs uh that we need for space for a growing family. Uh, we got so- one son right now, we got a daughter on the way, so we're trying to make room to make this happen and stay here. Versus, you know, selling and not being able to afford to get back in this town that we love, um. It would force us to move out unfortunately, if, if, if this doesn't go through.
And to be clear, you that, this is the only location you can build because of the septic system? That's what I'm trying, picking up on.
Correct, yeah, so we're, we're the, we're, you know, close to the street, which was, you know, the original building of the house. So we can't go any more closer to the street, um, can't go any further back, um, so where the. The deck and the patio pavers you see there, about halfway through the patio pavers is going to be our leaching field. Um, and then the tank is going to be set back ten feet from that uh. That back foundation of the proposed foundation, so we, we, we just did our septic system over. And we placed it in a spot that we would be able to do this addition. Uh, but there's no way of moving back as we have the wetlands and stuff like that, so we couldn't push the um. The septic back even more to do something in the back, so this is our only option.
This is the only location that you can go in any direction.
Correct.
Yeah, and Kathy, do you mind scrolling to page ten of the meeting agenda packet? So I think there was the septic in there, just for the visual, you can see that. Their rest of the lot is taken.
Okay, and um, and and what you said is that the, the structures of the houses are still significantly far apart, and I think that that, that would maintain. Um, the way that the, that the community looks, so it's not going to change it, it's not going to look weird or strange, so. The way it's supposed to look is, is going to remain, so I think that's, that's an important factor also.
Yeah, basically, the, the layout of this addition now, if you came down the street, it would be. I'm pretty positive it's the width of our driveway right now. So if you're looking at the house where the driveway ends, that would be where the foundation of the proposed addition ends, obviously there'll be a structure there now. Um, but it's not going to look like something that shouldn't be here.
Because it sounds like you're visually putting a garage where the driveway is by itself.
Correct.
And again, I know I used the term unicorn earlier. Um, sadly, uh, that was the only word that came to mind for me, but uh. What's interesting about this is that, while um. You know, the, the agreement of the neighbor Snyder isn't. You know, it's an odd funny, it's a funny thing, sometimes the agreement of a neighbor. Carries less weight than the disagreement of a waiver, a neighbor in a, when it comes to zoning. Uh, peels of variances. But what is interesting about this is, is that is just a, a, a alert Maria or assuage, you know, her concerns. They have this little, their, their septic system is located between basically the two houses. For lack of a better way, the easiest way of thinking of it. And what's interesting about this, uh, and I'm just not to dwell on it, but. Um, it seems that. When you, when Mr. O-Ha- correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Halloran, when you found out you had to replace your septic. You were able to actually relocate it on your property. And as much as you had to incur that cost, which I don't think anybody in any of these matters should disregard because. Septic is a rather, I uh, you know, that, that's no cost that anybody who lives in North Reading should just. Shrug off as being no big deal. You were able to put it someplace else because of the redesign or the advancement that people have made. And that's what freed up the space between you and twenty Wright Street, right? Is that correct? Because you had to put your septic someplace else, it just created that opening to.
Our septic.
Go left.
Before was uh. If you see the driveway, it was only about five or ten feet off of that where that driveway is, um, so. You know, back in twenty twenty, when we originally went for this variance that approved, not the same size, we're going a little bit bigger now. We knew at that time that the septic system had to move um, to make this happen. Um, so we made sure that when we went over the septic this time here. It would not be in the way of, you know, the property line would be, you know. Correct distance off the property line, correct distance off all of our foundations, and still be able to um. You know, do this addition, because we knew, we knew we were going to have a family and. And we wanted to, you know, do this once and not have to go back and, you know, do a septic over again and. Uh, unfortunately for us, the septic failed this year, so we had no choice of doing it, um. So that's why, you know, this kind of all happened at once.
Which also explains why you've come back to the board, even though the prior variants have been granted.
Correct.
So this basically is almost a new, new matter, because you've changed. You've, even though you've scaled it back from our last meeting, you have changed dramatic uh to, you know. Very much the, the entire uh design that was originally granted a variance a couple of years back, give or take time. Uh, is there, is there anything else at this time that you want the board to know or consider, Mr. O'Halloran?
No, I think I made my point pretty clear last, last meeting and, you know, I, I took uh everyone's thoughts into consideration. You know, I went back and had a meeting with my architect and um, my surveyor and. You know, had to repay them to do, to do their work, um, so I'm just basically here now proposing. What they had come up with to shrink these plans and, you know, I'm hoping to. Hoping to get you guys is okay and get everyone on board with this and hopefully we can start this project. Before uh, before baby number two comes.
Okay, thank you. So uh, does anybody want to move to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Going to get a second.
Seconded.
Thank you, uh, so um, uh. All in favor of closing the public hearing, just say aye.
Aye, Maria Lockhart.
Cheryl Bodie and I.
Brendan Rye.
Okay, great, thank you. So uh, within the board itself, um. I know Michelle, Brendan and myself were uh involved in the hearing last month. Uh, does anybody have any concerns that they want to raise within the board for hearing and purposes of this? And again, I think the only thing I always want to point out is the thing that I learned, we all learned from uh. Uh, our uh much, sometimes I personally miss uh prior chairperson. Is that, you know, we can't do these things, they don't exist in vacuums. Uh, that one decision has to be considered amongst the past decisions by the board. As well as decisions to be made by the board in the future, and that's perspective versus perspective. But um, this is a, it's. As much as somebody might turn around, and this is for consideration tonight. Someone could turn around and say, well, look, you gave, you know, the twenty, twenty-two Wright Street, you only gave, you know, you only required them to have. Uh, two and a half feet um to, between the property line and the, and the building itself. Uh, why you, why you're making my life miserable by asking me to have more. Uh, what is interesting about this is that that property, that plot, that lot that exists between. Uh, and is owned by, in this case, twenty Wright Street. That has created the gap in terms of just not only aesthetic visual, but practical purposes of. The distance between the two um, the two uh homes, their foundation lines, if you will. Uh, makes this a unique situation in that it doesn't really. Compel uh in this case, Mr. O'Halloran and twenty-two Wright Street to have to. Shrink their design much more than what they have, so to his credit, he's kind of. Uh, found, you know, he's, he's found a, in my, my view. Uh, he's, it oddly enough benefited from his neighbor having to have to um, have a. Stretch of his property that he can't do anything other than situate a, a septic system. Not that that's any different from any of us maybe, but um, it, it, it has given him um. Uh, a nice buffer, if it isn't actually a uh. Um, a setback in a, in its more classic sense. So I guess it, for purposes of this is. Has the efforts been, that have been made here? Um, even though it is only two and a half feet, and it is smaller than. Probably any variance that I can personally remember having heard, is it still? Generate, is it, does it have the merit uh that we should be? Um. Considerate of uh for purposes of granting such a variance. And I'm specifically asking the board that question.
Yeah, I think it meets the criteria for hardship. Um, and I'd be comfortable explaining it to future applicants why this circumstance was different than potentially their circumstance. But if there's another lot configured like this with their septic in the same location, with the no ability to build right next door, this much space between foundation. You know, if all the factors line up similarly, I would be comfortable with granting another two and a half foot variance to a different, different applicant.
Uh, Brendan or Maria?
I would uh, I would agree as well, I, you know, very unique situation here. And I'd be inclined to um, explain to the board if something were to come up like this in the future. To uh weigh all the options and potentially grant another uh situation like this.
And Maria, having, having come into this kind of cold, what are your thoughts?
I'm not voting on this one, so you guys can just discuss this one.
Uh, what are your impressions, though? I mean, just uh, just as in, in a general sense.
It's just hard for me because I really feel for this applicant, I get exactly what he's doing and he's so stuck in this position. But a two and a half foot variance to me is, is a little, is a little too tight for me, but I'm not voting on this one.
Okay, thank you, uh. And again, so ultimately, and just, just. Uh, this has, uh, this has nothing to do, this is not directed at you particularly, Mr. O'Halloran, so please just understand it. You know, the, what Brendan did raise in, I think, the last hearing, and it is an interesting thought. Is that as these projects start and are done in phase, uh, it does raise an interesting question that. You know, maybe going forward for purposes of grants of any kind, because all of these sometime. When these, when these matters are brought before the board, and the reason I'm bringing this up, and I'm not trying to belabor this. Uh, tonight, but it, we do, we do have the constraints of public hearing. And it's an inter- uh, so, uh, rather than going to executive, uh. It, it kind of, kind of boxes us in in order to um. Discuss these matter and put them before uh, uh, consideration is that. When a project is being done and developed in phase, uh. It does, it.
Sorry, sorry, it's a, one, one quick thing. What do you mean by project in phase? Because if this.
Didn't you, you, you had the prior variance, right? And then the, the building started. You already started the project on the other side, haven't you?
Well, the, so the original house that was there, the original dwelling. We did the whole house over, and during the time of doing the house over. Because I was already paying to get that um drawn up. For existing and the project, I had them do an addition for us. And doing the addition uh was when, you know. We did a size that, you know, we, we didn't know, we were just getting into projects, so that addition to twenty-four by twenty-four, we went for. Previous was, we were told that we weren't able to move our septic and leaching field and all that. So now, fast forward three years, that product's long gone, it's done. We found out we were able to move our septic, um, where it had failed, we were able to move it. And we found we had more space, uh. So now that we had the more space, we decided to redesign the addition, so the, the whole. Project is done, you know, the, the main dwelling's done, the septic's done. Um, so now this proposed addition is due to having more space knowingly, we had more space. Uh, and that's why we're proposing to go as big as we can go at this point. Uh, because we know what, down the road, we're never going to be able to do another addition on this house. So this is going to be the max that we can do, uh, but if this approves, this is going right up. This isn't going to be, you know, a phased project.
No, no, so uh. Then I thank you for clarifying my thought, it's just that uh, I just wanted to, so. In, effectively, you, you know, the main house got, got, was completed, but now this is just. By re-phase, it's not a, I guess, you know.
I don't have any open permits on this house, uh, as of right now.
But it's still. Okay, so I guess the, the question and concern for this board is, uh, and again. Uh. I, I'm inclined, uh, okay. Um, I think it's fair, does anybody want to bring a motion uh for the um. For the petition brought uh for purposes of um. Of the uh, the variance.
Uh, I, I do, but are we ready to close the public hearing first?
Uh, the.
We've already closed it.
We've closed public hearing, we're within the board, um, I just, I appreciate Mr. O'Halloran's correction of this. Because I was just trying to get an idea of, it's, I didn't fairly characterize. Uh, appreciate the idea that he had started, they completed the other part, and he didn't have any open permits. And that this was just a totally new um. Um, plan request, and hence. The variance, which again, kind of speaks to why this is still a unique situation, because. Uh, the failure of that septic system opened the ability for. Resituating it someplace else on his property, which in turn opened up a larger area to develop. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, it's a whole, whole new design from prior.
Right, um, so my thought of it as being a property being developed in phase is that. That. It. Unlike a lot of developments where it just, this is the plan and this is what we're going to, they found out that they could. They could change their original plan, which they had brought before the board some time ago. And it's an, so I. My characterization of it as a phased project wasn't correct, but it's. There's another, this, it, um, it's unique in that. The changed circumstance being the failure of the septic system afforded them the ability to rethink. Their original plan. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And in keeping with that. If the board is going to consider that. The opportunity that it's being afforded to the development of the change. Um. Maximizes the value of the property for purposes of, of development. Um, and inherently. Creates this chance that can, that they have to capture in order to maximize the value and avoid. Hardship, so the hardship, I do want to be clear. So the hardship, I do wanna be clear about that for purposes of the record within. The hearing, the board hearing, is that. You know, this is their opportunity to. Maximize their value and if not given that. By denial of the variance request would be. The economic hardship that they would would face because. The economic hardship comes from their personal situation, which is a growing family. And their inability to go anywhere else. Um or actually have to actually leave leave North Running in order to to um. To be able to. Um accommodate their family situation. So I think that's the one that Michelle, correct? Is is looking at as being the genesis of their hardship?
Yes, correct, and having no no other ability. No ability to situate anywhere else on the lot within within the zoning code and therefore needing the.
Okay.
Variants.
Uh so in keeping with the agenda tonight, does anybody wanna move to close the um? To close the hearing within the board itself?
Yeah, I'm I'm ready to uh make a motion. I guess, though, I just. In thinking through is has it been the practice of the board? To let the record reflect the hardships rather than specifically have the vote acknowledge a hardship?
Well, I think that will that will depend on the motion brought. I just wanna be able to clearly understand.
Michelle.
The hardship. Because if that's.
You can.
Sorry.
Motion for a certain um amount of a variance and then later. Um write the decision explaining the reasons. That the board went this way, more specifics.
Okay.
Take the time and write the decision out later. You can do that. You can just give. The amount of a variance grant or not now.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Okay, uh so there's a there's a motion to close the uh to to close the hearing. Uh do I get a second?
Uh Brendan Riley, second.
Okay, noted. Um does anybody wanna bring a motion? Uh and in this case, the voting members are going to be uh Michelle Bodie and Brendan Riley and myself, Bob Green. Does anybody wanna bring a motion?
If you were to grant to his two point six, it would be twenty-two point four. Instead of the twenty-two point five that I noted.
Thank you. Um I moved to grant a twenty-two point four foot variance from the Westerly side setback. For an attached garage with a room above to the applicant Sean O'Halloran, twenty-two Wright Street, North Reading, Mass. Map sixty-two parcel thirty-three.
Have a second.
Hi Brendan Riley, second motion.
Uh all in favor?
Shaw Bodie and I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Bob Green, I. Uh so the uh the motion uh carries. And uh the variance is stated within the motion is granted. Um Kathy, if you can just recite the uh the particulars of the uh the uh. The time period for the um the grant.
The twenty day uh um you have about sixty-five days to um. Uh to put forth a decision. Um and I don't know if one of you wants to work more on it or you want me to redraft. What I've written stating the hardships and send it out and you can edit it.
Yeah, I take a word document if you're offering.
Okay.
For taking a whack, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, uh Mr. O'Halloran, uh so uh the variance has been granted and uh your um permit will be. Available uh to go forward with your um development.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it, you know. All this work going back and forth and, you know, we made a deal. And I appreciate Brendan, Michelle involved. Thank you, guys, and Kathy, thank you for all your help as well.
No problem.
Yeah, and good luck. I do I I do agree with the the position that was put forward uh in your last meeting. That uh it will add a lot to um twenty-two Wright Street after the completion of the uh project. So um. Good luck with that and uh thank you for um for um uh uh going through the uh. Going through the process as it's as required within the uh the bylaws in the town.
Thank you. Oh, I appreciate you guys.
And good luck with your family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone.
Uh the last matter uh is uh the uh minutes from our last meeting, uh which interestingly. Uh basically were comprised of what kind of? Half what half of which, the bulk of which uh occurred at tonight's meeting. Uh did anybody have a chance to review the minutes? Uh I did and found them to be uh pretty um. Pretty com- uh comprehensive and reflective of uh of our meeting on March twenty-eighth. And if that being the case, did any would anybody like to make a motion regarding uh and uh. Um approval of the the meeting minutes.
I did not get a chance to review, but I will right now.
Brendan?
Uh yes, I reviewed and uh I Brendan Riley moved to approve the minutes from March twenty-eighth.
I'll second that motion. Uh can we have a vote on the uh the minutes as uh as as set out?
Uh Brendan Riley, I.
Barbara and I.
I'm reading, I'm reading. Maria, look, I even though I didn't really, I wasn't on the meeting, so I think I was supposed to approve.
Uh motion carries. Uh I think that's okay. Um so we're on for um. Uh right now on from May ninth and the only two matters that uh. Will be.
Sorry to be difficult. It looks like Kathy, was every other page scanned?
Of the minutes?
Yeah, I'm showing blank pages.
Um if there were a double-sided. And um. Which I try not to. Yeah, there was a double-sided, so I might have done double siding, which would leave blank pages.
Okay.
There were altogether one to four pages.
Okay.
I did get the fourth page.
Okay.
Version.
Okay.
Um did you see the uh list of meeting dates that I put out? I was just thinking that it might be easier for people to plan holiday um vacations. If they knew the dates ahead of time.
Uh that note I didn't get.
I think it was part of a um meeting request. But I can send it out again.
Yeah, why don't you do that? And uh we'll just keep um we'll keep the notice for um. May ninth. So again, May ninth looks like uh right now, it will only be um. The matter that we got, we agreed to kick over um. I'm sorry, I'm flipping through my pages now, as well as Fieldcrest. And uh regarding Fieldcrest, um. I will uh I'll I'll try to reach out to uh the administrator on Monday. Uh or Kathy, is that usually your job? I mean, it's up to you. I don't, I have no problem calling Bob.
Um I can. Put something out to him if you want. I I think it should come from you, but um.
All right, I'll I'll reach out to Bob on Monday and uh and see where.
Mike.
My, I sorry, Mike, I'm mixing mixing up people. Um and see where where he thinks this should go.
So you don't want any other hearings on for the ninth or?
No, um it's it is a meeting. Uh the only thing regarding Fieldcrest, again, just so it's clearly. Reflected and I know that it was brought up in in a uh.
Oh, put on the agenda that it's for status only.
Status only and that not no no no, there'll be no conversation other than. Uh what is going to happen within? Town administrator and then they're inherent to with that is uh town council, the possibility of town council.
So if town council doesn't participate, then we're gonna have to decide if this is something that we can actually build a separate a second. Essential, like full property on what it was a barn for forty years.
Right, so in short, um the lot has a a structure on it. And the petitioner believes that it, because it predated. Uh the um the bylaws that it just should be considered. Um as a a dwelling as opposed to what it might fall under under. The bylaws, which is what Jerry uh noted it in being in violation of. And it it carries everything from being non-conforming to being abandoned.
Do we have?
That's the issue.
By law, do we have a copy of the bylaws? And where does he um think, where does it say that if it predates the bylaw that? It's excluded from having to.
Because it was exist it it was built and existed before the bylaws were passed.
It's a barn.
So. Well, that's the question.
Allegedly it was a house.
Allegedly it was a house, there's no foundation and.
There's.
Yeah.
There's that's and I in all with all respect to um uh. Um a stone, Mr. The petitioner. Um that's the crux of his issue. And so. The question that was being brought and I I get him going into this because Maria wasn't part of the last meeting was. Um the well, no, the position was that uh uh you know, that these situations. Probably existed in any number of properties in town and or what do you do with a? Um characterization of a property. That was was standing, not property, excuse me, a structure that was uh. Was in existence and standing before the bylaws were enacted. Because there was this, there's this prevailing theory that everything just. That was existed before the bylaws just kind of got grandfathered in and. Kind of hold their own place and not being. They're kind of, they're not defined by the bylaws unless the bylaws give the. You know, characterization of the property as it really existed. And then there's the question of. When when the property was subdivided, did that suddenly shift everything that existed on that property? And suddenly made it part of the bylaws. There's a there's a story that goes that um. When they were redeveloping Fenway Park, uh if anybody's ever been to Fenway Park, there's seats that basically. Don't face home plate. They literally, when you're sitting in the seat, all you can see is the is center, the doors and center field. So when they were redeveloping the park and putting seats up on left field wall and and really doing a lot of work. Trying to create more seating within the structure, within the building itself. Um the there was a question, shouldn't we just turn those seats and make them face home plate? Well. As it turned out, uh they, if you turned them. And you broke the existing foundation and had to replace it, where those seats were literally sitting. And it sat in the concrete, um that suddenly. Once you built new seats there, then they were no longer, they were under the new cit- the new bylaws and. Uh building codes for the city of Boston. So the they didn't wanna risk having to have to. Be compliant with them because they knew they'd be biting off more than they could chew. So they left these seats still continuing to face. Uh not home plate, but basically center field. So it's kind of that kind of question. Um what what do you do with the with the structure that hasn't been changed?
But doesn't he wanna make it a house now? What does he wanna do with it? Is does he wanna make it a barn or a house? A house?
That's hot. Well, he he takes no position on that, so.
He did eventually say if he would like to sell it as a house, as a buildable lot.
You have to.
Right. And that's where, so that's what this is all about. And so. If town council decides that. Can give definition to what that structure really is.
And the other thing is that the big deal, why doesn't he get his own lawyer to argue it? Why is our lawyer having to explain it to him? That never happens, so.
And that's what I think uh the town administrator will help us to be able to figure out. If this is even something that. Uh town council should be considering. And if he come if town council, if administrator comes back and says no. It isn't appropriate to go to town council, that the burden um.
Should be on him anyway.
So has the burden shifted for purposes of of defining that structure? Uh to the town and if it hasn't.
I don't think so.
Then uh then it then it's upon uh. The applicant petition, the person who's in disagreement with the town. Uh commission, the building commissioner, to make a showing. And if they can't make the showing, then it fall, you know, then it. And then then he's just at the uh falls to whatever the whatever the board. Uh considers. And at that time, you know. Are we subject to, he would have you, I guess, effectively believe that. It doesn't fall into our purview either because our job is to enforce the bylaws. And yet that's he's asserting that that structure uh is grandfathered in. And that they don't really fall. So it's this little murky area that, I guess.
But.
That's what I want town council to clear up.
Yeah, and I guess I thought, I didn't think we were going to town council for a factual analysis. I thought we were going to town council to confirm whether. A non-conforming prior use in existence would supersede this abandonment argument. Um.
Or any bylaws.
Okay, yeah, or any other portion of the bylaws, because I'm just not familiar enough if that's been our historic and what the case law says.
Right, and it it and that's kind of it, because that's the the line that he he's falling under.
Okay, and and Maria, you're saying historically interpreting the bylaws. Usually we get some type of memo or an opinion from the petitioner's council rather than from our own council to help help educate us?
Pretty unusual for a petitioner to come in here without a lawyer and ask for such a complicated, because it is kind of complicated question. And then have a lawyer explain it to him. It's really for them to come in and explain to us. And then if it's super, super complicated and hard and we can't figure it out, then town council might help. But it's like he's coming to us and putting the burden on us to figure this out for him. And it's a little strange to me. I think it's kind of like, if he really wants to do this, this would be super lucrative for him to like build a house there and sell it. So why doesn't he just figure it out himself and then present it to us why he should be able to do it? Because we don't have the answers we need and he's not bringing us any answers. He's saying, here, let let let's have your lawyer figure it out and then tell me what I should do. So that's not how it ever works in any scenario that I'm familiar with.
Right, Ben, but at the same time, uh he's been cited by the building commissioner for. Uh the property being in violation of code and that is, you know, so. Um.
Yeah.
To define whether or not the building commissioner is entitled to do that is probably what we have to ask. A, the administrator to to find out if it's, if it is something that. Uh is is to be can to be determined by the by town council. And if he and if administrator just says no, you know, the burden lies with him, uh then that's pretty clear. In which case, we at status tell him the. The the decision by that it's not going, that it doesn't and why it doesn't go to town council. And then the next meeting will be, uh the burden will be on him to show that uh. What whether it is.
Right.
He's a, you know, legitimate dwelling or not.
He's appealing that is.
Performing.
The evidence in front of us of why. This is a ha- this was a house at one time or whatever, or it wasn't the that this that the uh bylaw wouldn't apply. That the abandonment part of the bylaw wouldn't apply. He's just coming and saying, well, you know. Town council can look at this and tell me why and then you guys can tell me. It's just honestly, like, I've never seen it work this way.
I I will say he did present some some facts, some interpretation as to why he feels like. It was a non-conforming use before the bylaws and therefore he doesn't have to follow it. Um I I mean, even to me, even if he came in with an attorney who presented a stellar case. I would still want us to do our own research to confirm anything he's saying was accurate in terms of legal interpretation. So I I.
Holding state law, wasn't he at one point? Quoting state law, wasn't he at one point? Yeah, I think he was quoting us a state law or a mass general law at one point. And arguing whether that, whether or not bylaws superseded the.
Okay.
Right, but it, then that goes to the whole, the question that, you know, the line drawn here, is he, is he truly grandfathered in? If he is grandfathered in, what does that mean? In other words, okay, just because you have a structure that's, okay, grandfathered in, does it still that it still has to fall into some definition of what that structure is and that's, that, so at that point, uh, it really, it really will fall to us to define whether or not, uh, that structure, um, is under the purview of the building commissioner. And I think the other, the question that really, uh, that was raised actually and, and this is the one that I think uh, I'd like to point out to Maria to catch her up on this is the, so the property gets subdivided and when that property gets subdivided, does that suddenly bring it under the purview of the zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
Because he was the, he was the party that sought that his father, the owner of the orig- the actual owner of the property or his estate, whatever the case is now.
Wouldn't make sense.
The one who's, he was the one that sought to have the property subdivided, so once you have it subdivided, does that basically take it out of the purview of being grandfathered any lo- any longer? Because you've basically changed the nature of the property from when it existed, which was a single lot, which was what was grandfathered in.
That was my question I had last, last week, that if it does fall under that, now it falls under our current bylaws, does that even make it a buildable lot based on its position and wetlands and lot ink and et cetera, so would it just become a moot point?
So, so when the, so the legal, the question that has to be asked and answered, I would assume is that did the action of subdividing the property bring that structure, shed, barn, dwelling, whatever it's going to be viewed at by anybody, did that bring it, did that bring the entirety of the property? Each of the, each of the parcels now having been subdivided under the zoning bylaws and if it did, now what is that property? Is it a barn? Is it a dwelling? Is it a shed? Is it nonconforming? Is it conforming? What is it? So, that's the question and I think the, I think it's a, it's a fair question that has to be, that can the town council or maybe even the town administrator can answer, which is when a property that had been a single lot had been brought before the, and had been grandfathered in under the bylaws previously, when it was brought under in, 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 in this case subdivided, did that suddenly take it out of being considered under grandfathered in free by law and now it has to exist within the bylaws? And if it has to exist within the bylaws, now we are empowered to decide whether or not that structure is a dwelling, is nonconforming, is a shed, is a barn, whatever, it's either conforming or it isn't. And if it isn't conforming, then he can't suddenly say, well, it's a buildable, you know, someone can just put a house there anywhere they want. I think that's what he's trying to maybe possibly achieve or not, I don't know, but Jerry takes the position that the structure on there is, is nonconforming and or abandoned or whatever. And this gentleman is saying, no, it isn't and you don't have any power to dictate what it is because it's been grandfathered in. But then we, we turn and say, well, you're, you're grant, trying to grandfather in a structure that you also uh, conveniently created a, under a subdivision as being now a two buildable lot.
Once he tries to change it though from being grandfathered, now it does fall with, under the bylaws, I think I remember that from uh, one we had recently, uh, before.
Right, and that's, that's the clarification that we're trying to get.
It's gonna not be grandfathered if he tries to build it, anyway, it's gonna have to fall within the bylaws, so then we're gonna get to the issue of whether he can build or not, that's what's gonna, that's where this is going, so.
So I just, um, and I know we shouldn't talk outside of the public hearing, but I just sent you a form that when someone wants to get a declaration that a lot is grandfathered, we have them fill this out and Jerry makes that determination through looking at his paperwork. So look at the form and um, see the requirements that they have to present and I'm, I'm assuming that Jerry had him do this. But um, you'll, you'll understand when you look at the form, it says, um, current area, the property has an area of so many square feet, um,
And if, and so.
Never had a structure located on it, the property is created on a separate lot on a certain date. It just goes through a lot of the um, determinations.
And so if the progression is, is that it goes to town administrator, this issue and he says, he, you know, the town administer, office of the administrator says, then it's appropriate to go to town council or says, no, based upon this, it isn't, then, then it comes back to us and, you know, that's as much of an answer to me as we need in order to, to make a determination, um, in this case, whether it's June or July or whenever the meeting returns to, to a public hearing, but I think it isn't, you know, um, I, I, I will, maybe it's just because I said, I've sat on both sides now on these issues. Uh, I can understand the petitioner's idea here, but, um, is the characterization uh, has it changed and, um, and the form that Kathy just said now is basically the one that very likely, um, you know, the town administrator will, will cite and say that kind of determines whether or not it should even go to town council, so I think the purposes of the board and just to conclude this, uh, since it is, you know, within the minutes and uh, it is just, it has more to do with the procedure that our board should take into, should follow with regard to these questions of when does, when does an issue or a property or something within no longer exist within the bylaws? Uh, excuse me, grandfathered in and is now within the bylaws and the forms and the uh, characterization and the change to a property, um, very well might, you know, uh, toll that and make it uh, bring it within, within our purview, so that's, I think, what we'll have, uh, hopefully back before us when we when this status, the matter is just discussed for status as of, uh, in in our, in our main meeting and I have every hope that we'll be able to say that it's going to continue for public hearing in June and we'll be able to make a decision on it and it's that, that's my optimism, uh, but I think it's practical as well. Your points are really well made, Maria, I mean, there's no doubt, but it's just a clarification.
That's the takeaway.
What's that?
She can't miss a meeting. That's what I took away from that.
Thank you.
But, I think what it, I think what it really speaks to is that, uh, uh, you know, this is, we're still very even though the Board of Appeals has existed for however many decades since they started the bylaws, I suppose. Uh, this is a young board and you know, these questions that, uh, you know, Jen sat, Jen sat on the, on the prior board before she became chairperson, I think Kathy might have an idea of this for close to maybe eight or nine and maybe even longer number of years and that, that, you know, ability to say you know, that there's something to be said for having that term of experience and having heard any number of issues and in those cases, they weren't heard remotely. I mean, there's a, just a genuine benefit to how the board used to do its business, good or bad, as you might consider it as someone who's applying or petitioning or, uh, you know, advocating a position. Uh, but in this case, uh, I just like, I get an understanding of what ha- how, when is something no longer grandfathered in? I mean, there comes a point at which, at least, at least with real estate uh, and let's face it, we're talking about property, uh, for most part, property uses or, you know, what becomes of them. Uh, you know, how long does something continue to just be considered grandfathered in? And everybody throws that term around, but it's just not a blanket, there has to be some limitations on it. And uh, I'll be curious to see what town, the administrator, officer of the administrator says, or maybe town council just gives us a very simple definition or opinion as to, uh, you know, when does the grandfathering no longer exist or what really defines it? Because that's what the bylaws, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll end on this, the bylaws are meant to just create conformity not just within the town of North Reading, but within the Commonwealth, within, you know, everybody. I mean, otherwise you'd just be running rush, roughshod and using your property for whatever you want to do and that's not the purpose of, you know, that's why we have a, that's why we have a commissioner and uh, that's why we have a town inspector, because otherwise people would just do whatever they want to do and say, hey, this, you know, this, this activity, this structure existed before there were bylaws. Well, that's not the po- point of this and I'll be curious to see what they have to say. Um, in both fairness to, uh, the, in this case, uh, twenty two, uh, I mean, to Fieldcrest and everybody who, who lives in and around to Fieldcrest, so.
Yeah, on the uh, on the note of anarchy in town, um, it might be uh, time to wrap up.
Uh, does anybody want to make a motion to close the, the, to tonight's meeting?
Uh, I do, uh, Michelle Bodine liked to move to close tonight's hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'm Maria Lockhart, second the motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Shaw Bodie and I.
Maria Lockhart, I.
Brendan Riley, I.
Motion carries, thank you all so very much, uh, May ninth, everybody looks good for that and uh, uh, right now, uh, the ju- the agenda looks pretty light and um, thank you for your time tonight and as always, thank you Kathy.
Thank you Kathy.
Maria, when you get a chance, can you send me your um, um, phone to get in touch with you other than the office?
The telephone number?
Yeah.
Oh, was that you Kathy that called me while I was trying to log on?
Yes, we were just, and sure you weren't coming.
It's coming.
But I think the only number I have for you Maria is your office number.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Alright, great, alright everybody, thank you so much for tonight and uh, uh, enjoy the rest of the week and, weekend and uh, uh, take care.
Okay, bye.
Bye everyone.
Bye.
Goodnight, take care Maria.